We're just going to go ahead and get started with our study session concerning reopening and the Preparedness Task Force. Presenting tonight will be Dr. Gilbert and Mr. Narducci. Oh, I see Laura just arrived. So Laura, we're just getting started. So I assume Mr. Narducci is going to be starting first, and Mr. Narducci?
Madam President, members of the Board. The Governing Board reviewed and provided input into the four quadrants of prepared status on May 4th, 2020, at the regular scheduled Board meeting. Since then, the Task Force has done an amazing job shaping our plan with actionable steps in the areas of school operations, care of students, care of staff, and care of families, including internal supports. Dr. Gilbert and I want to acknowledge the dedication and expertise of this team of 41 individuals. Tonight, we are presenting a draft for your review. With us tonight on this team's meeting, we have Mrs. Amber Stewart, Director of Assessment, Dr. Dama Salu, Director of Equity Inclusion, Mr. Larry Rother, who is our Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Mrs. Brenda Vargas, Director of Counseling and Social Work, Dr. Kim Marshall, Director of Student, Mrs. Lindsay Hartley, who is our Coordinator of Health Services across the district, Mr. Terry Locke, Director of Communications, and Dr. Wendy Nance, in her new role of Human Resources, and also to assist us with the curriculum instruction pieces to assist if you have any specific questions. In this process, as you can imagine, and I remember the comments before at the last meeting, that we had an arduous task ahead of us. We had many individuals who contacted us for ways to provide input and feedback into the preparation of the plan. Besides the outreach of our specific divisions of the Task Force, we also determined that a best way to incorporate feedback was through a survey sent to all CUSD parents and staff. Parents and staff also had the ability to give us comments within the survey, as well as by email. Mrs. Amber Stewart, our Director of Assessment, will review key aspects of the surveys.
Thank you. Can we see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening. The survey results being shared tonight include parent and guardian feedback regarding their thoughts about returning next school year. So before we begin to dig into the data, what I'd like to do is share details about the survey. So the survey was open from May 28th to June 3rd, and we had 19,138 guardians complete the survey, which accounted for 25,311 of our students. This may be confusing to some, so I want to acknowledge that families have multiple students attending CUSD, and they were able to provide feedback for those students. The pie chart that you see next to that graph includes a breakdown of the grade level responses that we had, and we gathered feedback across grade levels equally in the district. Now, we're going to take a look at some of the questions. So the first question that is centered around returning to school asks families, if the following changes were in place, would they be more likely or less likely to send their child to school? Parents had the opportunity to respond to common options that are listed below. And what you're looking for in this data are spikes within the chart to see if they're more likely to send their students to school or less likely. Red being more likely, purple, or the dark blue it might look like on your screen, is less likely, and the bright blue is no impact. So what we see here is that there's a red spike within the chart showing that families are more likely to send their students to school if the employees have daily temperature checks and if students have daily temperature checks. With this, you'll see that there's a bright blue bar under the health questionnaire for employees and students, and families don't see that, or I would say 50% of our families don't see that as being an impact in sending their students to school. The next slide shows a continuation of options that were provided for them to respond to. The color matching is the same, where red is more likely, purple is less likely, and the bright blue is no impact. We see that the health questionnaire for elementary families had no impact on sending their child to school, and we start, ooh, I'm sorry. We start seeing, students are, I'm sorry, families are less likely to send their students to school when we start restricting recess or eliminating extracurricular activities. The next question that we asked was centered around transportation. So the first one we asked was, does your child ride a bus to or from school? And we saw that 34% of our families send their child on a bus. So those 34% were asked a follow-up question. If school, when school opens, would they send their child on the bus? And looking at that 34%, that's the breakdown of what they would see. So 34% responded to that question, showing that 47% of those families would continue to send their child on a bus. 15% would no longer send their child on a bus, and 38% of them are waiting, are saying maybe with appropriate safety precautions. The next question is asking families if child, if they have childcare needs once school reopens. 82% of our families do not need childcare. 19% of our families need some type of childcare when school reopens. This question asked, based on their family's situation and personal concerns about safety and health, please select the learning model for your child next year. And 56% of our families plan to attend school in person full-time. 34% of our families are looking for a hybrid or modified program, where they spend some time in school and some time remotely. And 10% of our families are looking for a virtual. And the final question, when it, when looking at returning to school, keeping in mind that our first day is July 22nd, asking if they plan to send their child back to school. 65% of our respondents said they do plan to send their children back to school. 27% of our families said maybe, and 8% said no. When digging into the comments and looking at that 27%, comments were centered around they're waiting to see what, how things look with the COVID-19 in Arizona. And that was the completion of the data that we saw within the survey. Are there any questions?
Do any of our Board members?
I actually have a question. This is Lindsay.
Thank you.
So I see that, you know, you talked about some of the data in terms of like how many parents you surveyed and how that equated to, you know, 29,000 students or something like that roughly. Do we have any other demographic breakdowns in terms of like, you know, what is the level of income in the home, race and ethnicity, you know, things like that? Because I think it would be interesting to see which parents kind of answered yes, no, maybe on these questions, particularly since we know that COVID is disproportionately impacting our Black Indigenous PLC communities, and, you know, it's impacting, you know, our poor communities that don't have access to healthcare.
We do have the breakdown by campus. So we were able to see, we had the families select what campus their child attends, and that's the breakdown that we have. We didn't ask income-related questions because that kind of can violate statute in terms of surveying families, but we do have the breakdown by campus. We did put the procedures in place to try and increase participation by putting the QR code in the survey availability, like the link to the survey during our meal distribution date, so that families had access to it there. But we do have the breakdown by campus.
Are there any other questions from Board members?
So Amber, this is Laura. Did you notice any patterns where there are some schools way more heavily represented than others in the survey?
Yeah, I mean, there, yeah, I would say that there was more participation at other campuses, but we do need to keep in mind of those, the enrollment on those campuses. So we'd have to look at how many students actually attend that campus versus how many responded to that, to see if there's equal representation. For example, when we're just looking at the data in terms of background, people have high response rates at Hamilton High, very high. When we look at the enrollment, there's a bunch of large groups of the sites. We'd have to go back and do that analysis.
Amber, I don't know if anyone else is having a problem with your microphone cutting out a little bit, and I don't know if you're turning away, or, but we're having a little bit, I'm having a little difficulty hearing some of the words.
I am too, Barb. I was actually just going to say that. I couldn't hear anything that you said, really, just kind of, it was kind of spotty.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Thank you for telling me. In looking at the data, when we're looking at the results in what you can call a raw format, it will look like there are more respondents at certain campuses than others. But we have to keep in mind how many students are enrolled on that campus. So looking at the chart right away, we'll see that from Hamilton High and Perry High, we had a really good response rate in comparison to some of the elementaries. But when we look at how many students are enrolled in Hamilton and Perry, we expect those numbers to be higher because more kids attend there. So what we would have to do would, we'd have to do an analysis of how many students are enrolled versus how many responded, to see, really dig in to see where we're missing. Does that make sense?
Amber, another, I have another question. Did, this was only a survey for current students, not for incoming students such as kindergartners, correct?
Correct. It was current families.
Okay. And I had heard that there was a little bit of confusion from some of the families as to what grade they should declare for their child, as to whether it was the one that they just finished or the one that was upcoming. And so I think that we shouldn't take the grade level quite too seriously on the survey because there might be some errors in that. But I, so if we do, are making decisions based on the grade levels, I think we need to look at that, the grade level data with a little bit of, with that in mind, that they may be, there may be more students that are getting popped up to the next grade level because that's where the parents believed they were currently, since school had already ended.
No, you're absolutely right. We did hear that feedback. And what's great about the tool that we use, which is Qualtrics, our survey tool, that I was able to update that to have them select their 19, 20 grade level about 24 hours after the survey went live. So I don't disagree with you, but we were able to make that change for a majority of the survey duration.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Evans or Mrs. McGee?
Yep. This is Dave. Amber, thank you for this information. It's really helpful. I guess I'm, just want to ask the question more directly. Is there a way to disaggregate the information on students or parent, or in terms of the parent survey, parents who are entitled to schools and then also parents who are north of, let's see, Queen Creek Road? Because we really need to understand their representation, as Lindsay said, and a lot of times, it's a lot less than the schools to the south and to the east.
Uh huh. Yes, we do have that available in the full document of the survey. We have the breakdown by campus.
Okay, because it'd be really important that we understand that, so that we are seeing what representation we're getting from those schools.
Yep. I'd be happy to share that document with the Board.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Mrs. McGee, do you have anything?
No, I do not, thanks.
Okay, I think we, and I think, Mrs. Brunner, you had already said something.
I did one more question.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I noticed that there was a really high response rate. I can't see it at this very moment, but regarding, I think it was extracurriculars and recess, where it looked like people really didn't want that to be changed, to look normal, I guess. And was that, you may not have looked at this, but I'm just going to ask it, was it correlated with people who said maybe at the very end about whether they'd send their kid back? Like, was it something where they would, you know, act on it? Is it, you know what I mean? The numbers that were maybe were actually lower than that's what says maybe here for extracurriculars and recess and whatnot. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah. So within this chart, we have more likely, less likely, and no impact. So the blue one would be no impact. There isn't a maybe option here, so I might be misunderstanding you.
So, for example, extracurricular activities are eliminated. 52% of people said they would be less likely to send their child to school, but then when we look at the last slide that says, are you planning on sending your child? I think it was like 27% were maybes and 8% were no's, or something like that. So it doesn't add up, I guess, is what I'm saying. Like, they're staying in one spot.
Yeah.
I'm going to be less likely to send my kid if you don't have recess. But then, at the end, could we just get some info later to see, like, what did that really affect at the end? Did it shift them to a maybe or a no, or not?
And I, no, I understand, I understand. I do, yes. We also have to keep in mind that someone that said, yes, they do plan to send their child to school, could have said, I'm less likely to send my child to school if you remove extracurricular activities.
Right. And I just would like to know what that might be, so that we know how significant less likely means in this part. Do you see what I'm saying? So if we look at these and we see, okay, like, 10% of the people who put extracurricular and I'm less likely to go, if only 10% said maybe, then we know that it wasn't like do or die for them, but it was a concern. But it wasn't one that sent them over the edge of like, you know, now I'm less, it's a maybe, instead of I'm sending my kid.
Yeah. I don't, I don't believe it's a direct correlation, but we can absolutely dig in.
Okay.
And see if we can find something, yeah.
Thank you, Amber. Okay, I think, Mr.
I actually had another question.
Okay, can you make it, is it something that can be done quickly?
It's a quick one. I just have a question because the survey was like two weeks, is two weeks old at this point, and the country looks a bit different now, in Arizona specifically, in terms of like, are rates going up of COVID? So I'm wondering if the data will look different if you did another survey now, knowing what we know.
I don't know if anybody can really answer that question.
Well, I guess essentially what I'm asking is, are we doing another survey, knowing that, you know, our rates of COVID have increased? Because the answers might look different on this survey.
Well, I think, and I think, let's, at this point, I think that's going to have to be a question that's unanswered at this point, as to whether we even have enough, I think what we need to do is, is look at the further presentation to find out what the plans are and as to whether, you know, it would, would, changes in that actually make a difference in what we are planning to do.
Madam President.
Mrs. Mawston? Mrs. Mawston?
Yes, Dr. Castile.
There would be a letter following decisions related to the plan that Mr. Narducci and Mr. Gilbert, and in that letter, it would provide options and ask each parent at that time to declare their intent, and it would be closer, you know, closer to the, well, I think we committed the third week or fourth week of June to get the information out. So there is, it's not a vote per se, but it would be a declaration of intent. But I think all this will be a little clearer when Mr. Narducci and Dr. Gilbert go through the presentation.
That answers my question. Just, you know, I want to take into account that, you know, the numbers are looking different, and so parent and student attitudes might change, and that we need to maybe take that into account.
Thank you. So we'll go back, Amber, if you're done, I think we'll go back to Mr. Narducci then, and he can continue with the presentation. Oh, Dr. Gilbert.
Actually, Madam President, members of the Board, I will start this first part. I'm going to share my screen with you so that as we're presenting, you will be able to see the presentation and to respond to, or Member Love, we have been looking at the changes that are happening, and so within our country and within Arizona. And so I think your question was a very good and valid question, and that's something that we've been looking at just about every day as we have been working with the Task Force, to look to see where we are. We know that we're having discussions about today, knowing that school would start in July, and we could be an increase or it could be a decrease and things are well. And so what we tried to do within the plan is to look at how would we address, depending on where we would be at the time of school starting. So I just wanted to share that. I'm going to share my screen with you. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I think as we go through this draft, and I think it is important to acknowledge that it is a draft that we've been working on, and I think it's really important that as we review these guidelines, we keep in mind that currently, the school funding structure will only allow for an in-person or virtual approved AOI, which is Arizona Online Instruction Program, in order to receive funding from the state. Our budget calculations are based on student enrollment counts over the first 100 days of instruction. So that's looking at the number of instructional days, as well as the hours a student spends in an academic course of study. But I think that is very important as we look at the options that we're talking about because with, without having an AOI, which is what a lot of school districts are trying to get right now, if they don't have one in existence, we're fortunate that we have Chandler Online Academy that we've had for the last 10 years within our district. So it's going to be important that the Arizona Department of Education, as well as the State Board of Education, with lawmakers, evaluate and consider adjustments to the statutory rules and requirements regarding reporting attendance timelines for determining average daily membership, as well as any other related issues tied to student enrollment and school finance. Because without a change in the structure, you could only have students in the brick and mortar and receive funding from the state, as well as having students in an online program that has been approved already by the state. So as we go through this presentation, I would like to start by, at least, let's look at some definitions to help you as we go through this and defining some of the areas. We have the four quadrants that we presented to you earlier, in an earlier presentation as we were moving forward. So definition-wise, I think it's important to understand when we look at quadrant one, which is in red, which is opening schools with precautions. Precautions as an example being increased cleaning and instructors of how we're making sure that students are washing hands, how we're looking at sanitizing as an example. Quadrant two would be we open school with modification. Modifications as an example could be an A/B, A/B day schedule, where students are not attending, they're attending in person on one day and may be in a virtual learning environment on another day where they're not on campus. This is really a situation where we're having to reduce the volume on a campus based on what is happening at that particular time. Then we have quadrant three, which is the schools are continued, their closure is continued. So we don't open, we continue as we ended in a closure situation. That would be in quadrant three. And then in quadrant four, we are looking at schools would be open in the beginning of the year. And then there might be a situation where a closure is called that impacts maybe the district, it could impact a school, it could impact a portion of the school. So we have these four areas that we have put plans in place, depending on the situation that we're in. Other piece that I think you will hear as we're talking, and I wanted to find, is when we're looking at virtual learning, you will hear synchronous and asynchronous learning, which is, and the synchronous learning refers to a learning event in which a group of students are engaged in the learning at the same time, compared to an asynchronous learning, which is the idea that students learn the same material at different times and different locations. So when we go through different areas, for example, if we're talking about safety, we will talk about the quadrants as to what would occur in safety in quadrant one and quadrant two, for example. And then we would move to the next, the next piece. You will find that in some instances, because the big focus that we're going to have today is really in quadrant one and two, that we're going to spend most of our time in, but understanding what quadrant three and quadrant four looks like. Then the last thing I would ask as we begin to present this draft, is that there's a lot of information that we have put in this document for you to see, and we would ask that we are able to go through the document because you will see how things move together and how they're connected, and then at the end, be able to have the time to answer questions in all of the areas, as well as the different quadrants that you have. So I would ask, if possible, if you could make notes while we're going through the presentation, and then we can return to answer those questions, whether it's myself or Mr. Narducci, or the others that have been involved in the Task Force, and that's their area of expertise to be able to do that for you. With that being said, I would like to move to the next piece and turn it over to Mr. Narducci to start with the area of health. Madam President, members of the Board, in the first area of health, the key areas of focus that have been determined are district health protocols for staff and students, and management plan for tracking COVID-19, district-wide health hygiene and infection control, education for students and staff, and another key area of focus is management of students in the health offices, which you can imagine is a very critical piece upon our return. In quadrant one, health education for students is going to be focusing on appropriate education, age-appropriate education, on good hygiene practices from preschool to high school students. Health education for staff is going to focus on infection control strategies, not only for school staff, but for district staff. Management of ill students within the health office is going to focus on protocols and procedures used to avoid the spread of infection, communicated with parents and staff, and a flow chart developed for these communications. We are working closely alongside state and county agencies, and the whole key is to isolate ill students from well students and staff, and reduce frequency of non-health-related visits to the health office, so that the health office is specifically working with students who are there for health issues. Management of students returning to school after illness is also a consideration here that we've put in the plan. We will follow CDC guidelines when it's okay to return. We will require a doctor's note and follow-up visits with the health personnel as check-ins for those students, both socially and emotionally, as well as just to make sure things are going well. Management of ill staff will also require temperature monitoring at home each day prior to coming to work. Staff will stay home if there's a fever.
Staff will stay home if there's a fever of 100.4 or greater. The management of the staff working to return after illness will follow the CDC guidelines as we talked about with students and also will require a doctor's note. And there will be follow-up visits with the health personnel as check-ins for that individual to make sure that they are doing fine as well. Personal protective equipment, otherwise known as PPE, is available for staff upon return. Masks, gloves, facial shields, et cetera. Masks optional for staff with exception of the health office, staff interacting with public in specific classrooms where critical care plans are provided to students. Quadrant two health modifications will be exactly the same as quadrant one. In addition to that, each health office is looking at providing an area of isolation for students that have symptoms until parents can pick up. Parents will pick up right away or emergency guards will be called as well to have those students picked up from the health offices. We are ordering products to create shields in the health office to isolate students who may be waiting to be picked up by a parent. In the next area, we are addressing in quadrant one, support services and custodial care of our students and staff and buildings. Their key focus areas include increased sanitization of each site, enhanced training of custodial staff, and communication of these areas to our parents. In the area of support services, we have already ordered over 2,800 sanitizer dispensers to be placed in classrooms, 700 cases of sanitizer, and 350 mobile stands to be used in specialty areas. Delivery is expected June 30th, 2020. We have also ordered gloves, masks, and face shields for schools and sites to be well-prepared for the start of school. The district is installing Plexiglas shields for all school offices. There's a consistent approach to sanitization and we have purchased hydroxyl ozone machines which are used to mist and to sanitize large areas like full classrooms, buses, et cetera. Our custodial staff is committed in this plan to enhance their training, but we are expecting four-hour blocks of time starting this month. Increased daily cleaning and disinfecting of high-traffic areas. These include doors, counters, restrooms, and other horizontal surfaces. Also following guidance in the district infection control cleaning plan, which is a phased plan, which requires specific checks and bathrooms being cleaned multiple times per The next area of focus is elementary schools. Many individuals want to know how our elementary schools will open. In quadrant one, the key area of focus for elementary schools are to accommodate for parents who choose either in-person or distance learning environments, accommodate for staff who cannot work due to immune-compromised systems or caring for family members, address academic gaps due to school closures, distribution of technology devices for all teaching staff, technology device distribution for all K-6 students who show need. We have two enrollment options for the fall for our families. I'd like to bring you through those. Parents who choose the in-person model of instruction, that's what we had prior to closures, will maintain registration at their current enrollment site, whether they're on an open enrollment or whether it's their neighborhood school. If they're enrolled there, that will be their enrollment site for the fall. This will serve, this model will serve preschool through sixth grade. It's five full days per week. Preventative safety measures are in place. Social, emotional, cognitive learning supports are in place daily. They will have access to special content area classes. Accommodation and support services are provided. There will be recess breaks. There will be restricted common area use, structured transitions anytime out of the classrooms. They will start the day in the classroom. And in-classroom celebrations will be virtual and onsite field trips, mini-assemblies, as well as any types of outside in-field trips that come into the classroom, long as we meet guidelines of temperature checks of those individuals coming on campus as well. PPE devices for teachers will be optional. Parents who choose to enroll a distance learning model of instruction will register with Chandler Online Academy. As Dr. Gilbert said, we've been fortunate to have the Chandler Online Academy for close to 10 years now. K-6 will be provided on the online academy with approval of the Arizona Department of Education, State Board, as we have applied for, are applying for the K-4 addition to that model. This will be offered to our children five days per week. These students will be enrolled at the Chandler Online Academy. They will not be enrolled at their school site. District device available if in need. They must have internet access. For those in need, we will be looking at accommodations for that. Access in the distance learning model by teachers will be five days per week and students will have access to a live teacher-led instruction, which is the synchronous learning, two to three times per week, and the asynchronous learning, two to three times a week. Just depends on the instructional model. So you can see in that model, it's a little different than how we closed up the year with the Google Classroom and the limited content areas that we were able to provide all students. This would be all content areas. Accommodations and support will be provided. Important to note, also the social, emotional, cognitive learning supports will be taught by the classroom teacher and counselors online. The transition, however, between programs may only take place at the end of a quarter. If a parent decides to be in one of the learning environments or the other, we are asking that they remain in that for a quarter. Modifications to movements within the building and school activities have been addressed by the task force and our recommendations are students go directly to the classrooms by the designated start time. Parents would use the drop-off and pick-off area, but they wouldn't get out of their cars. We'd have sign its place there. We'd have staggered dismissal times from oldest to youngest because many of our older students do take care of our younger students. Also, transitions on campus will be structured, distance and for younger grades, pre-K through second, devices and still where they would be able to distance by holding a rope with markings on it or things that will help them organize their going to and from the class together. Breakfast and lunch transitions have been a key focus for this group. They're using use of the total cafeteria and stage area as well as the outdoor eating options if the weather permits. If distancing cannot occur, transition to eating in classrooms, alternate days, including heat days, rain days, and directional markers on the hallways and floors for travel or to and from those key locations. During recess, we would create an independent stations for structured social distance play. Those might be things like obstacle courses, soccer drills, races, et cetera, that will keep the students busy and moving around and out in the fresh air, but not engaging in activities that may be too close in proximity. Also, hand sanitizers, sanitizer would be used entry and reentry of buildings. After-school clubs and activities will limit participation to clubs only that have natural social distancing without shared material. There's a few examples of some of those clubs there. Where it says restricting additional clubs, we want to take on clubs as conditions fare better and as we move our way into different phases for Arizona. Also, when we do our lockdowns, a safe security of the room with distancing, we're working with agencies to be able to assist with fire drills, et cetera. That might be a little different, such as walking smaller groups of students through drills rather than large groups of schools. Student-teacher interactions, of course, one of the biggest parts there is desks facing in one direction as we return and again, moving as phases change. This has been a recommendation also from ADE as the guidelines, as well as other national agencies. In quadrant two, it calls for a modified school schedule. And so the task force was looking at total reduction of students on campus during blocks of time. So the key areas of focus when we modify elementary schools could look like rotational attendance with a hybrid instruction learning to meet the guidelines. So I'm going to go over those rotational attendance options. We have an A/B, alternative day rotation, or a half-day, AM/PM rotation. In either plan, it must be approved in conjunction with the governor's office, Arizona Department of Education, the State Board of Education. As Dr. Gilbert had mentioned in the beginning, these programs aren't financially supported at this point and there would have to be action taken for us to be able to go into those. An A/B rotation schedule, an example of that, it'd be that students go to school on Monday and Tuesday in the A schedule and Thursday and Friday for a B schedule, or Monday and Thursday for an A schedule and Tuesday and Friday for a B schedule. It would be the ability to incorporate the hybrid, which is in-person and out-of-classroom, for interventions and extra assistance, assessments on Wednesdays where that could happen as well. In this plan, breakfast and lunch would be consumed in the classroom. Transportation runs would be regular routes. We'd only have fewer students on the bus based on the days that they're going. So same routes, students would know which day to ride those same route buses to school. In the AM and PM rotation schedule, if we opted for that, these would be three-hour instruction blocks daily. Groups for elementary families would be in the same rotation. That way we can keep families together. Lunch service would be the same as in quadrant one. Students would have specialists in the rooms. Transportation would run an AM pickup and a PM drop-off. The only difference would be that in the middle, the AM drop-off will overlap the PM pickup. So AM drop-off will be in the same location that they pick up the kids in the PM and then we'd have another three-hour instruction period and then the PM students would go home. The difference in this model, the AM/PMs, we will add more sanitization and cleaning of desks between sessions because now we have a different student at a desk and different students coming in from the students that were there prior. I want to explain the hybrid distance learning model that will support both rotational models in quadrant two, as well as if we were to move to quadrant three and four. We will really have to rely on the hybrid model, which is a little of what we did at the end of last year, but our curriculum instruction team and our technology team has put so much time and effort into making it more robust where all content area can be taught and where students can be engaging with teachers the majority of the time of the instructional time. So the hybrid distance learning model would support students that are in quadrant one if they are absent five days in less than two weeks. So if a student had to be quarantined for two weeks, they don't have to miss out on learning. We would initiate the hybrid model with the classroom teacher, with the student who's in that classroom. The use would be Google Classroom to connect that student and to accommodate students for the short periods of time. This model would work for all kindergarten through sixth grade and same teacher would be providing the distance learning supports through Google. It's just another way to connect with students. The teacher-led instruction will be asynchronous learning through assignments and specialized instruction supports. That can be built on top of the in-person model of instruction or the online model of instruction. And that's the components, the key components of the elementary plan. As you know, in the document you received, there's quite a bit more of action steps for each of these areas.
As we look at secondary, seven through 12, if we look at the key areas of focus, it is the same as the elementary as we move forward. We feel it is important to provide communication to our parents and the community regarding the reasonable safety measures that will be in place, as well as the challenges of enforcing social distancing and that social distancing being related to before school, at lunch, during passing periods, and in the classroom is going to be very difficult. And I think it's important to note that in the beginning. And I think it's when we look at the options that we have for parents, we took that into account as to the options that we have. Our focus of making sure that we are giving guidance and expectations to our staff and our families as it relates to providing specific expectations for personal protective equipment, as it relates to masks, it would be optional for staff and students to wear masks. We provide direction and guidelines as the start of the year comes up so that everyone would know what the expectations are as it relates to behavior. And then gathering, expectations on gathering during free time around campus would be shared by the administration of those schools. So when we look at the models that we have for the secondary, it is, again, classroom instruction is in-person or distance learning. Our in-person would be similar to what we had prior to having to close the schools in our normal rotation of classes at the junior high and the high school, the electives that we had, and I will share a little bit on electives in just a moment. But making sure that we build capacity also in teachers during this particular quadrant to make sure that we are prepared for the future so that we have full-time virtual teachers prepared for full-time virtual. Develop hybrid options for students who must work remotely, as Mr. Narducci said, who cannot return to school for a specific period of time. Again, this is for a short period, more than five days in less than two weeks. We would use Google Classroom. We've been working in the task force and having conversations to expand what we're doing with Google Classroom so that as teachers are working with students, it gives a connective piece other than just giving hard copies of what the homework is or what was done in the classroom to be able to utilize that, which will also include some training. So when we're looking at in-person, that would be the focus on campus in quadrant one. We do have to still make some decisions such as electives and determining if classes like choir and band would be safe to resume. Again, being that this is a draft document, we are continuing to have conversations as we move forward. As we look at the second option in the secondary, and that is utilizing the Chandler Online Academy for distance learning, we would continue to use virtual Florida Virtual Curriculum that we have in place now through Chandler Online Academy as the options for students that do not want or parents feel that they are not ready for them to return to in-person classes on-site. We will have, teachers will not be expected to prepare in-person lessons and virtual at the same time. And so really important from that perspective. If families choose to attend the online program, the expectation is that it would be a commitment for a minimum of a quarter. As we look at staffing for online, for the virtual, as well as staffing for in-person, we would need to have a minimum of a quarter as we are looking at how we would shift staff back and forth as we're working through. Curriculum in the secondary, we will continue utilizing Buzz, which is our learning management system in the online program, as well as that's what we use to provide our online learning currently. We would use Google Classroom as the hybrid for remote learning and we would determine additional online curriculum as resources for teachers to utilize as we move forward in this medium. We'd also create clear curriculum expectations for quarter one as we address gaps in learning due to the school closure this year. Devices, we would continue Devices, we would continue to purchase additional devices and hotspots, so that we can distribute them to those families in need in connectivity, as well as in devices. As we look at assessments, we will continue to advocate for the suspension of state standardized testing, as we've seen difficulty with this this year, and being able to move into next year, and what does that look like? We would develop assessments to analyze learning gaps and determine interventions that are needed for our students, and then continue to create common assessments through our teachers to administer for the first week before teaching occurs, to get a baseline of, of where we are. As it relates to student activities, as we're looking at space and how are we connecting students, but still making sure that we're keeping distance, we would develop alternative ways to have students gather and celebrate, whether it's clubs, spirit weeks, that is done virtually, things of that nature. And then finally, in quadrant one, we have the athletics and extracurricular activities, the guidelines that have been developed and put in place for returning, for our high school athletics and activities, with Mr. Williams, our district athletic director, and working with the athletic directors from all of our high school sites, putting this in place, reviewing the CDC guidelines, as well as the National Federation State High School Association and Sports Medicine Advisory, as well as having all of the documents reviewed by our risk management trust for our guidelines and looking at summer camp as well. And then finally, in quadrant one, we would look at travel, and that would be our local travel of students, extended trips that are over 60 miles, as well as out of state. All secondary travel will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis to determine trip approval. We would make sure that there is permission slips from parents, as well as waivers, in order for a student to attend the trip, and we would also continue to look at our field trip policy, to review processes to determine safety measures, and what expectations might be for students and for the businesses that they would be going to as it relates to where they would be traveling. When we look in quadrant two, again, this is opening school with modifications. In the secondary level, I think it's, it's important to note that when we look at the rationale, making sure we have blended instruction for our guidelines, looking at possible A/B for an alternative day rotation, increase the, the need for technology devices, considerations for accommodations, and modifications for individualized learning for special groups will be real important. So, when we look at classrooms instruction, the, the model that you have, or that we are looking at, is one, having an A and B day, but in order to utilize an A and B day instruction option, legislation will have to be changed for the funding structure of students. If not, we will, we would have to then look at possibly having half or a number of students in the online, and number of students in in-person, to try and reduce the volume that we would have on campus. If we went with an A and B day option, all classes are, would still be offered, just as we would in, in a regular day, but there's a possibility that it may reduce to just one elective as we look at classes. We would look how we would separate students, so that we can decrease the volume of students on a campus, and there would be responsibilities for students and expectations for the day that they are not in-person, or if they were in virtual. So, with that, and of the in-person, some, you'll see that it seems like a small section, but we still have the majority of what we saw in quadrant one in, in quadrant two, but the difference is having an A and B schedule type of an option. As we look at distance learning, ensuring that we have extensive teacher and instruction training on Buzz, which, as I said, is our learning management system. If, if attending COA, the commitment would be looking at the remainder of the year for students, so that we can make sure that we have the right staffing in place for, for distance learning and in-person. Looking at the junior high level in this model of having lessons in small groups, having virtual teams to be able to work with students, having a master schedule that allows for small groups by utilizing Google Meets, again, utilizing the Google Suite in order to help us in that area, and the grading would follow the current Chandler Online Academy grading practices for virtual classrooms. And again, the areas of distance learning in quadrant one would also be in quadrant two. When we move to quadrant three, this is if our schools are closed, continue to be closed. Focusing on increased technology would be paramount to make sure that we have all of our students connected, maximize learning through our synchronous and asynchronous models of instruction through our online program. Expectations would be necessary from the perspective of how do we manage within a virtual environment fully for teachers and students, and, and parents understanding what would that look like. So, making sure that we use guidance and, and sharing what does that look like. Establish protocols for teachers that cannot, that are at high risk and may not be able to, or be willing to return to the school site. Although students may be virtual, to teachers would still be a big part of them, working onsite at, at the school location. So, we'd have to really look at the expectations and the guidance there, or provide specific expectations of PPE as staff would be onsite, guidance for families prior to the school start, or upon closure, as to what that would look like for families, so they know what the expectations are early, provide direction and guidelines for students and their behavior, and what does it look like and expectations online. Because I know that we've had in the, in the initial of this year of closing, that we had grading at the high school level and pass/fail at the junior high level, but we would be looking at, looking at all content and grading as we would have normal, and not using pass/fail. So, in this model of closure, again, distance learning, focusing on expectations of the virtual space of instruction, using, having small group instruction via Google Meets, creating technology support teams to assist students with questions, whether it be by phone, messages, emails, synchronous platforms. We would set up our master schedule to allow for teachers' time, office hours, prep time, as well as the collaborative time that is really important, as teachers are working to prepare lessons for students. And I think that is very important for our teachers to be able to work together. And again, utilizing the grading system for our Chandler Online Virtual Classes that is currently in place now. Curriculum-wise, provide training of various, a variety of interactive platforms, unify planning across curriculum, additional online curriculum resources for supporting of teachers will be important, and then allowing access of intervention programs virtually for our students, so that our teachers can support them. Student activities in this model would be finding ways and alter, ways that would be virtual, to still get students connected, developing activities from, from that vantage point, but athletics and travel would be suspended in this model as it relates to schools closing. Throughout all of these areas that we're going to talk about, Equity would have a strand through it. I think, and this was brought up earlier in the conversation, I think it is important that CUSD District Administration consider numbers of students of color when staffing schools is going to be very important, because schools with students of color may need additional supports to deal with trauma. We would utilize our district-wide decision-making protocol within our Equity roadmap to ask the, the questions, to make sure that we are looking at it from an Equity lens as we are reviewing the plan. That will be very important as we continue to move, to move forward. From there, I will move to our next area, which would be safety. And now, we are going to get into the areas of support for safety, special education, those areas as to what would happen, and how our teams would be working for our parents and students and our teachers working together as we look at the different quadrant. So, we look at safety in quadrant one with reopening, with options, we're really going to focus on minimizing campus access, home visits and welfare checks, addressing traffic and safety. So, when we minimize access to campus would be by those who are, are not students or staff, really making sure that as we are moving into this, and we're trying to keep the volume of people on campus to a, as low as possible, we'd be restricting the number of people that would be coming on campus that aren't students. We'd provide pre-designate entry and exit points. We would close and lock gates that are not staffed or for drop-off or pickup. We would make sure our staff is wearing identification badges, and we would minimize parents on, on campus. When we look at traffic safety control, it's going to be important that each security guard, especially for our elementaries, because we have security offers, officers for our elementary, they would all have their five schools where they would rotate and manage and visit those schools, with priority starting with the larger schools. When we look at quadrant two, when we're opening with modifications, the piece here is we would continue with what we are doing in quadrant one, but we would have to adapt the schedules around what would be happening, what would happen at the elementary related to the hours they would be in, days and times that would be set by the elementary, depending on the model that they would be in for teaching, whether it's an AM/PM or an A and B day. When we look at quadrant three for schools closing, which is how we ended this year, the important piece would be making sure that we have visual inspections of our schools. Elementary and non-instructional sites would be controlled by our security officers. Security at the secondary schools would, would still be on their main site, and evaluating and monitoring their school site, and reassignment of personnel from other departments in order to assist in, in safety and management of security. With that, we'll move to transportation, and I will turn that over to Mr. Narducci.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. In the area of transportation quadrant one, key areas of focus, of course, we are going to ensure that drivers are highly trained, but I really like to focus on the clean buses, the cleaning of buses daily, which seems to be the key part that people would be interested in, in this piece. So, with that, our buses will be wiped down each night, handrails, doors, handles extremely exposed to areas. Mr. Hewitt explained that wherever students would touch mostly, the seats in front of them, et cetera, would be, would be wiped down with disinfectant. Buses will be sanitized once a week. This may happen during the week or on the weekend on a regular schedule, and masks and face shields will be optional at that point for the drivers. District, I'm sorry, distancing for students will be based on available space and need. As we saw in the survey, there are some parents that are wanting to drive their students to school or walk or bike ride until they see what the conditions are like, and so that may even provide additional room on the buses for our initial start. In quadrant two, the key area of focus now still remains with the sanitization and disinfecting of our buses to keep them state, safe, as in quadrant one, but it really focuses on the routing of students that would be different than if we have a modified schedule. So, in option one, which is an A/B routing schedule, general education routes run regular schedule every day. They'll pick up half of the students on the days assigned, and which will provide more room on our buses, and special education routes will need an A and B scheduled rotation as specifically assigned, based on the individualized needs of those students. And option two, and this is more for the elementary, as we get into larger campuses, this is a little less effective of a rotation, but the AM/PM routing schedule, and in that regards, I explained it in the elementary plan, because it was only in the elementary plan, that there would be an AM drop-off and a PM pickup at the same locations, and the only crossover would be in the midday when we're picking up students for the PM routes after we've dropped off our AM students. In quadrant three and four in transportation, we need to really determine which services will be done by the transportation staff. And what that means is, will we have specialized needs for routing considerations? We have many of our students that participate in private day schools, where the district provides the routing and the transportation. Those schools might still be open. There might be a need in quadrant three or four where a program might not be in place, and we, for example, an after-school childcare program, where we might bus students to a different location. So, also, there might be other needs or other reasons that buses would be utilized during a closure as well. And then, Dr. Gilbert will cover food and nutrition key areas.
As we look at food and nutrition in quadrant one and two, we're focused on one and two, whether it's reopening with precautions or modifications, because in, in quadrant three with school closed, we would still look at curd, curd-side pickup, and in quadrant four, it would be a combination of what we would do in one and two. But when we look at the key areas for food and nutrition, all employees retrain, would be retrained on enhanced hygiene and cleaning procedures, as well as the food and nutrition employees would wear masks and gloves when customer facing. When we look at elementary breakfast operation, breakfast in the classroom at sites would continue, to serve breakfast as it is usually does for this operation. We would consider alternative service points, as well as students may consume breakfast in, while distancing in the cafeteria or in the classroom with the principal's discretion. When we look at lunch operation, we would start by, students would be staggered, we'd have staggered classes to arrive in the cafeteria to maintain distancing when lining up. While they're lining up, students must wash hands prior to arrival. There would be marks on the ground with footprints or stickers to ensure distancing. As we look at the serving of lunch, the cafeteria staff would serve all items to students. It wouldn't be self-serve. Salad bars would only feature cooked and packaged items, and all items would be individually wrapped and in enclosed containers. When we look at students eating, we would have, students would return to their classroom with the principal's discretion, or they could be spaced socially distanced in the cafeteria, as Mr. Narducci stated earlier, that they would utilize a number of areas on campus in order to spread students out, in order to work to keep a distance with students. As we look at the secondary lunch options, the focus in the secondary would be staggered students to arrive in the cafeteria to maintain distancing. Cafeteria would remain open all day. Instead of just for the, the number of lunches that a school would have, we would have cafeteria open all day to allow for students to pick up food outside of the normal lunch period. That would reduce students at one, being all in at one period. Additional lunch periods may, may not be necessary, but would, would be looked at. We require hand washing or sanitizer prior to arrival in the cafeteria. We'd, we're installing hand sanitizer stations at the entrance of the cafeteria. We would also have markings on the ground or footprints or stickers to assist with students lining up and distancing themselves as they're in the cafeteria. We would also encourage students to scan their IDs versus entering their number on the PIN code, which will also help with high-touch areas. When we look at lunch service, again, all food would be packaged. We'd eliminate the bill-to-order station and go with the grab-and-go station to improve speed of service. After, offer alternative points of service, which would, could be outdoors, in hallways to reduce congestion in the cafeteria. With our schools, we would make sure that we utilize the different spaces, could be cafeteria, hallways, large areas outside for students to eat. So, we'd either have lunch would be remain in the cafeteria, again, hallways, open spaces, or possibly in classrooms. Again, hallways, open spaces, or possibly in classrooms of the principal. Again, the key would be working with students to be able to get lunch throughout the day. Work with hand cleaning, keeping space as much as possible and utilizing our cafeteria workers to help with that. Our next would be moving to community ed.
Our community education department probably has the most experience of dealing with all of the conditions of the COVID-19 outbreaks and phases because they've been offering services and have put plans in place immediately for the health and safety of our students. And so I want to commend them. But their key areas of focus in quadrant one as schools reopen is to provide childcare. Kids Express is at the elementary schools, Little Explorers programs are at our high schools. They take care of our little ones. These programs are at 34 sites. They are ensuring that there's proper training for health and safety guidelines in place at each of those locations. Also, safety and hygiene requirements being followed with intermittent hand washing and also sanitizer sanitizers being used. Also providing after-school enrichment classes at the 31 elementary schools as required and determined by principals. Their key area is a focus in quadrant two, I'm sorry, in quadrant two, are exactly as quadrant one with modifications. These modifications will have to ensure that our students can access enrichment classes based on the rotation schedule. Make sure that when they're at school on a rotation schedule, that there is something for them to do for those parents that choose that after-school enrichment. Also, on the AB days, I'm sorry, the AMP days in that rotation, to ensure that we have opportunities for both of those groups of students as well, as childcare will be something that will be needed. So as I said, in the elementary case, if we are on an AM PM schedule, some of our larger classroom spaces would be utilized for the childcare of the AM students. That's why our specialists would teach in the classrooms of the standard classroom so that we can utilize those spaces to take care of our children based on parents having to work. That that will occur differently, like I said, in the AM rotation than it would on an AB rotation. The childcare is already for that as well. Childcare understanding is key for our working parents. So there'll be increased multiple points of communication advance to keep parents well informed of any changes way ahead of time. We know how hard it is for parents and how frustrating it could be to find childcare. So we will make sure those communications happen frequently and give them plenty of time to make those adjustments. In quadrants three and four under community education, this requires campuses to be closed with alternative childcare locations determined. As we did with closures, they might be for essential care only or we might have to close services altogether, depending what the order is from the governor. The next section I'd like to cover is the group of federal programs group, the English language learner supports. And for those of you that read the AD recommendations or any national recommendations, we're right in line with all of the groups that need to have specialized services provided to them. So of course, their key focus areas will be addressing academic gaps due to the closures. We're also looking at addressing any gaps to ensure that accommodations and modifications for individualized services are provided to groups. Also, the distribution of technology devices. And there's also other requirements under federal grants that we have to ensure that the devices, as well as the hotspots, are provided to specific students. Also, address social emotional aspects of students and connect to resources as if required, but also to provide those resources to staff, family members as we as we put that together for them. The delivery of instruction, whether it be in-person classes or distance learning, is mandated by state. We're required 120 minutes at the elementary level and required 100 minutes at the secondary level. This will be synchronous and asynchronous activities related to goals if it's online and will also assess compensatory services due to the closures that occurred. Dual labeled students, these are students that are labeled receiving special education services and English language learning services. We will meet their IEP minutes as described in their IEP, as well as meeting the EL minutes required in both the in-person as well as the distance learning option. We will definitely have to go with a hybrid model to add additional supports. And we will use Google Classroom as a co-teacher and teacher of record, whether it be the EL teacher or the content area teacher of record. In quadrant two, and quadrant two is with modifications, our key focus here is considerations for accommodations and modifications for students depending the delivery model. So with that, our delivery of instruction, in-person classes or distance learning, the hybrid for in-person and distance learning will be utilized. And that will utilize Google Classroom, Google Meets to deliver minutes for synchronous instruction. And then that will be basically focused on the ELL goals, which are goals in speaking, listening and vocabulary. Those have to be in every lesson plan for our students in the online environment or in the in-person environment or any blended environment. Doesn't matter what model it is, that's a consistent. Students with social emotional goals and require additional services, increased services will receive services in person. Related services personnel will help with the hybrid model onsite and distance learning instruction. Our English, our ELD teachers will provide minutes as needed, if not the general education teacher. If it's not the general education teacher, excuse me, ELD teacher will provide the minutes as needed. Some of our sites have additional staffing that's based on a formula by the state, based on the number of students that that have been identified as needing services. And those are the teachers that will be used in this model. On quadrants four, three and four, that's where schools are closed. The key areas of focus will be portions of quadrant one and quadrant two, of course, but also maximizing learning through the synchronous and asynchronous models of instruction. This will be maximized through all content areas, enhancing the online curriculum and utilizing existing online instruction model with increased professional development and training. Also, very important in this aspect, as I said before, whether the schools are closed or open, there's a high need. And we saw it in the surveys too that we received back from parents, as well as many of the comments of the social emotional aspects of students and connecting to resources as needed. Dr. Gilbert will cover the counseling and social emotional learning aspects of the reopening at schools.
So when we look at counseling and the social emotional learning or SEL, the key areas of focus is address social emotional aspects of students and connect to resources as needed and also address social emotional aspects of teachers and staff and connect to resources as needed as well. So we look at social emotional learning of students. We will focus the first two weeks on incorporating SEL lessons. At the elementary would be daily and at the secondary it would be during conference periods and utilizing supplemental lessons that are available through our adopted curriculum. When we look at personal and social development, look at doing a needs assessment to see where our gaps, things that we need and support. Quarterly training would focus on trauma and SEL and resilience for our staff. We would continue to check in with students, respond to the needs at the site, as well as continue to deliver lessons in the classroom and support groups for our students. We would put in place home visits or we would follow guidelines developed by the Department of Counseling in collaboration with our own COSD Department of Health and our our safety department and putting guidelines in place so that when our our employees do home visits, we make sure that everyone is safe and they're in compliance. We have our services provided by our care center, which would focus on parent education as well as support for our parents. This is what we would focus in as we look at our quadrant one. And then when we move to our quadrant two with opening with modifications, you will see that what we have in quadrant one would would also carry over in the quadrant two and have some minor modifications. So when we look at personal and social development as an example, we would make sure we are prioritizing needs, whether it be in-person or virtual, to make sure that we have that as a focus. We would continue with check-ins with students and response to sites as we did in quadrant one. For personal and social development, we'd also continue to create turnkey presentations for Unified Approach with our students and our schools. And in quadrant two, as we look at services that are provided by the CARE Center in conjunction with Southwest Behavioral, we would look at recommendations from industry and work with partners to develop plans that would be approved by the district. Again, utilizing what we have within our community to help our students and our families that will have need if we're in the situation where we've had to open with modifications. Then when we look at quadrant three where schools are closed, as we finished this year, we would focus on the Department of Counseling and Social Services would continue with virtual supports for our students and families and teachers. As direct practice, we would continue to follow the guidelines for crisis-like situations, virtual suicide prevention guidelines, utilize live video calls with students when needed. Utilize a variety of platforms for daily and weekly check-ins, as well as, as you'll see at the bottom here, for best for direct practices, we have a virtual crisis response team, which would follow our crisis response teams process as we move forward through this quadrant. Community partnerships, really weekly updates to inform our families of resources that are out there, whether it be food, shelter, safety, mental behavior, health supports, financial assistance in working and collaborating with our community and then sharing that information out to our families in need. Parent presentations through virtual platforms, continued professional development for our staff in order to assist our families. And then when we look at services, again, provided at the care center, when we look at schools being being closed, what will be important is to discuss whether we can reopen in person, the in-person services, and if not, how can and what can we do virtually to get services to our families? Again, very important as we look at same things that are happening in quadrant two, we would carry over into quadrant three. From there, we would look at, next area, we'd look at special education. And in quadrant one, when we we look at reopening with precaution, the key areas of focus is addressing academic gaps due to school closures at the end of 2019, 20. Address any gaps and ensure instructional accommodations and modifications for individualized and specialized groups is in place, making sure that we are ready with that. Early childhood special education or priority preschool, as many know it, teachers. We're looking at whether it be in-person or distance learning. We would resume the 2.45 hours or four times per week, utilizing synchronous and asynchronous activities related to the student's goals. Assess compensatory services due to closure. Paraeducators would be utilized to check in with students who are not attending to support them in distance learning. When we look at special education teachers at all levels, whether it's in-person or distance learning, we would meet the required minutes as described in their current IEP. Use Google Classroom as a co-teacher or a teacher of record in order to work with students utilizing a seesaw to adapt general education materials. Assess compensatory services due to closure. And again, utilizing our paraeducators to check in with our students to give them support in distance learning. When we look at related service personnel, in-person or distance, students being in-person or distance learning, meeting requirements of minutes as described in the current IEP. Using Google Classroom, again, focusing on speech and language instruction, only utilizing Google Meets for these sessions, as well continue I'll find evaluation under the IDA in in-person for our students. When we move to quadrant two, as it relates to our special education department, opening with modifications, again, focusing on curriculum and instruction, online planning for synchronous and/or asynchronous instruction learning, as well as considerations for accommodations for our students. We look at our special education teachers or our private preschool teachers in a hybrid model for in-person or distance learning. We would make sure that we assess compensatory services with the general education teacher who are in-person. Google Classrooms and Google Meets to deliver special design instruction or SDI for synchronous learning related to IEP goals. Our special education, and we'd also look at new learning of our SDI skills at school sites and reinforce the skills through Google Classroom. Students in instructed curriculum, making sure to have groups onsite. So it might be Wilson, Just Words, where these students are working onsite with teachers to make sure that they're getting their needed services. Paraeducators, again, would provide check-ins. Students with social emotional goals with priority of being serviced onsite. And then we have case managers would be checking, doing check-ins weekly to ensure students are understanding as well as having additional SDI as needed. When we look at our related service personnel, we have speech, language and instruction or SLI. They would assess compensatory education. Utilize Google Classroom to push in supports. Provide articulation onsite and again, continue with child find evaluation under the IDA in person. That would be in quadrant two. As we move into quadrant three, where this is where schools would be closed, we would see in the key areas of focus, it would be portions of quadrant one and quadrant two. Would maximize learning through virtual instruction. Utilize existing online instruction model with increased professional development and training for our staff. As we look at special education teachers, because of schools being closed under this quadrant, it would be looking directly at distance learning for IEP services. So we would assess compensatory education with general education teachers. Google Classroom and Google Meets to deliver SDI for synchronous learning related to IEP goals. Data would be collected through scheduled Google Meets and work turned in through Google Classroom. And finally, our paraeducators would be assigned to continue to work with our students and check in, provide accommodations, as well as support students' needs as it relates to specially designed instruction. With that said, that covers all of the areas within our quadrants that we would look to as a draft to put in place in moving forward. At this time, we would like to take questions from the board. Again, I know this is a lot of information to take in at this time and we really look forward to your feedback and your suggestions.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. I do very, and and Dr. and Mr. Narducci, I really appreciate all of the work and effort and collaboration that went on to create this document and to come up with a plan as for for what we need to do in the fall. We have a little more than 20 minutes left. So I'm going to go ahead and start with a couple of questions. To confirm, so that people who have come in late, with our hybrid models, right now, our structure of our structure of the state financial situation does not allow funding for students in this hybrid model. Is that correct?
That is correct. In order to get funding from the state, students have to be attending the brick and mortar in-person school or an approved online AOI that is approved by the state in order for the district to be funded. If a student, for example, was in the brick and mortar school on one day and was home on the second day, and even though there might be some instruction, say, for example, through Google, the state would not, in the current structure, the state would not fund students while they were at home. They would only fund the portion of when the student was at.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to to make sure that those who are watching and may perhaps missed the beginning understood that restriction that we have on on the hybrid model, so that there would have to be legislative or gubernatorial changes in order to to actually do that, our quadrant two model. So I do have just a couple of things. We had spoken about isolation areas in the health centers for students who could be suspected of having of becoming ill. And I guess a couple of, I guess, things that really weren't covered on this is if someone is tested and gets a positive COVID test, do we have, what do we have, will we have in place at the schools? I guess, addressing the issue of, number one, do we have a low, at each site, will we have a a person who is like the local point or is the point of contact? If the health, obviously, the health department, if they're doing contact tracing, is going to want to trace contacts to the school and things. And do we have a threshold of of COVID cases because that we would need to reach in order to consider having to close a school? Because if we had just one case, I, you know, it's not something that would probably be closing a school. And then, obviously, we won't have to report anything because we will be getting the information from someone else, probably the Department of Health, saying that the student had tested positive or a staff member had tested positive for COVID. So could you, could someone comment on that?
That's a great question. I'm going to have Lindsay Hartley come in, but my quick, while she's getting onto the onto the meeting here, my quick answer to you is when a student has symptoms that are not a COVID positive test, the symptoms is are what's the protocol that Lindsay is working with for everybody to understand. The county health department will work directly with our key contact, which is Lindsay, and a key contact at every school that has been identified for COVID cases. And we, you know, we have heard over and over from the county health department that we don't have a COVID case unless we have verifiable evidence through the testing or through the county health, because all positive cases go through county health. Lindsay, do you want to follow up with that, please?
Sure. Yeah, I've been working very closely with the Maricopa County Public Health Nurse, who also works with the Arizona Department of Health. And we are actually in the process now, working with the local and state divisions and the different districts across the state to develop kind of a outline or flow chart, if you will, of who gets identified in the school to be that point of contact and how that flows up and where it flows to. At this time, they're not reporting, you know, back to us when we have cases for staff. But going into the school year, it will look like, you know, we will have the same reporting guidelines that we do for other reportable things. So if we do find out that a student has tested positive, we will share that information with the state. They might already have that information, but, you know, it's kind of a double check. And then, you know, same with them, they'll they'll contact us when there's a case, so we can make sure everybody's on the same page as far as reporting. And the guidelines for exclusion or quarantine when kids get sick or when family members are sick will also come from the county and the state level as we get closer to that July mark. There's been a few things over the last couple of months that have changed when we look at symptoms and how those are reported and what quarantine looks like. So, you know, as we get closer to that date, we'll have that information outlined for all the staff in the district to see exactly how that works.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you, Lindsay. I appreciate that. And then I was just going to very quickly just make a suggestion, and I know that a lot of our schools have perfect attendance awards, and I suggest that we abandon that for this year so that people will stay home when they're ill and that they they don't have an incentive to come to school because they want to get that perfect attendance award. Just my comment.
Thank you. It's a very notable comment. Thanks.
So I'm going to go through the board members. David Evans, what would you like to ask?
You know, I don't really have any questions right now, except on special ed, which I'll save for later. But I just want to make a quick statement. So from a safety standpoint, that's my biggest concern. You guys put a ton of time, and thank you to the entire panel, and put everything together to present this, present these different scenarios. Took a ton of time to put all those together, a ton of thought. I'm concerned about safety. And as a parent, with my kids not even in Chandler schools anymore, kids need a time to be heard. This is, they've been through a lot. They've been home without, they need to be heard. We need to make time for that. But then I see some opportunities here that are, we've never done this before, but this is a great opportunity for us to improve on delivering our service and access to students. And that there are like two or three things I'm concerned about. One, quality of education. I know there's all that other stuff. There's flexibility and all that, depending on what happens with COVID-19. But quality of education, we control. And then the other one is continuity of education. We have to make, we have to be sure that as kids come and go, regardless of whether they're at school or at home, they're children, we are responsible for helping them to learn and we're responsible for for them being capable and and moving forward. So we have to have that quality and continuity. Like I said, we control that. And finally, Craig mentioned pre-assessment and progress monitoring as we go. We have to really focus on that. That was a really quick little slide there. We have to focus on that because, again, we can control that. We need to know what we're doing well, what we're not doing well from an education standpoint, and what our students are actually absorbing and how we can make that stronger, a stronger commitment to that. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and we agree with, we agree with you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mrs. Brunner, do you have something? Some questions?
So I have way too many for the, you know, a couple of minutes we've been allotted. But I guess a few of the big questions. What parts of the plan that are created, one, two, three, and four, meet the CDC and guidelines and the state guidelines that were distributed last week? For example, I guess, you know, one example, but there's a million of them. Masks are not required of staff members under these. And does that meet? So I was wondering if we could get a copy of this with highlights of when there's things in there that may not or, you know, don't meet either the CDC or the state proposed options that they provided. I was, I still have concerns, as I've shared before, about the use of Google Classroom and its efficacy pretty much at all levels, but, you know, especially as it mostly was used, at least according to the folks I've talked to, as a delivery tool for, you know, worksheets. And and that's not adequate. So I know you mentioned training, but I guess I would like more information on exactly how Google Classroom can be used as an effective learning management system if we do go hybrid. That's something I'd like more information on, because parents and staff members have shared concerns with me on that delivery model. I have concerns about special education. For example, we have things listed like case managers will check in and provide additional SDI. But the issue with that is case managers already have classes that they're teaching, especially if we're doing the hybrid model or in-person model every day. But under the hybrid model especially, how are they going to check in on all their their kids? They're not even necessarily kids in their classroom. So a lot of times, special needs students, case managers are someone they don't see during the day, especially in the high schools. And so I don't see how logistically that's a that's a fair thing to put down that that's going to happen if those case managers are busy teaching all periods of the day and then prepping for, you know, the one period they get off. The other question I have is with hybrid, there was mention of AB schedule and that students wouldn't be at school two or three days a week. And I'm just wondering when teachers will have time to create online curriculum in addition to preparing for in-person instruction? If they don't have at least one day where they they have time to do that? There's other districts that are considering instead of an AB schedule, an ABC schedule or an A B C D schedule with Friday off, so teachers have time to create online curriculum or whatever. Throw that out there. And then I also would like to get some information about what the budget impact would be for each of the options, considering we might need to increase staff for maintenance if they have to do a huge amount of additional work. Clearly, we're going to need to hire some new folks. They just can't do that in the same amount of time they always have before. There's only so many other things we can ignore with their their positions to be able to do the intensive amount of cleaning that they're going to need to do. So that's just one example of many of what the budget impacts could be, or transportation, for example, having an AM PM schedule. What is that going to do to the budget? How can we get feedback from staff and families on these plans now that the draft has been created? I'm curious what that looks like. And I have about 10 other questions I'll save for another time. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We're going to take all this information, and I would be happy to see the other questions that you have, whether it be in writing or if we want to meet in person, so that we can take this information to the task force as we review all of this information.
Okay.
Mrs. McGee?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First off, thank you both very much. It was an excellent presentation, and I can tell a lot of work and time, effort, and hours went into it. I think, Mr. Narducci, you said something about students or staff who were out sick, in order to come back, they would need to have a doctor's excuse. Are we going to have people, kids and staff who are out sick be tested so we know whether they had COVID or just a common cold? Because we wouldn't require a doctor's excuse for like a common cold, would we?
No, good question, Mrs. McGee. What we will definitely be looking at is when symptomatic pieces that a student is out for any time or quarantined, that their reentry to school will be that they've had the proper medical release, which may include the testing or the quarantine to see if the symptoms were not COVID-related. So either way, we will return those employees and students noting that we've either had the quarantine period. That would be in place if we're in a specific phase. And again, a lot of this is determined based on what the conditions are around us in the immediate community. But yes, we would require the medical piece to go with that upon journey.
Okay, thank you. And I have a couple of the quick questions. I understand where if a student is chosen to be in classroom versus online, that you don't want them switching back and forth, except at the quarter. But I hope that we will, you know, make special accommodations for a student who, you know, makes comes to the classroom and then for whatever reason their parents want them to do online learning, you know, even though it's not the end of the quarter. So hopefully, again, we'll, you know, be open-minded there. And then the last question I have is, do we know if the state is looking at different funding structures for schools?
My understanding is that there has been and there is conversation going on at this time, but until the legislation reconvenes, nothing, nothing would be changed until that time. I think Lana is on this meeting, she might be able to shed a little more light.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gilbert. And yes, Mrs. McGee, there, we have been working on that for quite a while, looking at the funding structure and some hold harmless language, because our ADM, which is our average daily membership, is based off of days one through 100. And so we've been working on hold harmless language to be able to compare last year's average daily membership to this year's, and if it were to decline by over 2%, that we would be held harmless. However, that takes legislative action or an executive order from Governor Ducey. It takes some flexibility for some things to happen. So we're working on flexibility, we're working on ADM. That's a huge concern, and it's something we've been working on every week. With the latest just national things that are happening around our nation right now, it's impacting potentially when the legislature might go back. And so we're still working, our lobbyists are still working on those pieces, and it's impacting every single school district. We've given options, and we're trying to work through that, but just know we're continuing to work on it. And the governor knows that it's a huge concern. The legislature knows it's a concern, and I'm hoping that we'll see some progress. But as of right now, just like Dr. Gilbert and Mr. Narducci said, we have no other options except for right now, what the statute says, how we're going to get funding. And how we get funding is students coming days one through 100. And so our options right now, if we were to go to an AB schedule, would to be to cut our funding in half if no exceptions were made, either by the legislature or the governor. So it's something that we are continuing to work on.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
And Ms. Love?
So I do share, I think a lot of the questions were asked already. I do share Mrs. Brunner's sentiments in terms of the ADE guidelines and the CDC, particularly since there are some differences that I noted with the plans here with regards to lunchroom and lunchtime and the playground and whatnot and masks. You know, I also agree in terms of like the sped questions, too, because I think that might be an unrealistic ask, you know, especially if we're not hiring any more people to support with that. I do have a question in terms of like substitutes and where they factor into this, especially because we know that teachers may get sick, whether it's COVID or it's something else. And so, you know, what does that look like in terms of like staffing? It's been told to me that in a few schools, when, you know, we don't have a sub, we blend classes together, of course, out of convenience. But my concern would be how would social distancing work with that? And how would, you know, we be able to accommodate if a teacher is out and we cannot get a sub? I think, too, I know there was a comment made about like staff being forced to interact with the public will need with the public will need to wear masks. You know, I also want to kind of clarify like what that means, because I think that teachers' jobs are to interact with the public, our students and families are public. And so, you know, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, why we're looking at models where masks are optional, especially, you know, given some of the guidelines with the CDC and ADE. So I think I would kind of evaluate that there. I also want to see more of a plan for, like, I appreciate the plan for the mental health and wellness and social emotional needs of our students, but I also want to look at the social emotional needs of our staff, because this is a large ask, all of these plans are a large ask for them, and they're going through this crisis too. They are parents, you know, with children at home. And so, you know, I'm just kind of wondering too, is there a fully developed plan where we can like offer some mental health services for our teachers and our staff? And then I think that was all that I had in terms of considerations.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all that feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Love, thank you.
Appreciate it. If there's, if there's no other questions, I think we can go ahead and we're hoping that if any other board members have additional questions, like Mrs. Brunner, if you would please email them to Dr. Castile or Dr. Gilbert or Mr. Narducci, I would certainly appreciate that, and they can get back with you and take a look at some of the considerations or questions that you have. Dr. Castile, did you have something?
I was just, just going to ask the same thing, if you do have additional questions. I think I got most of them, and hopefully with Donna's help, we would like to address them to each of you, and I'm sure we'll be getting some from the community, but I just wanted to let you know that we will address these questions and be back to you soon.
Thank you. At this point in time, I think we'll go ahead and take just a quick break to, before we start our meeting, even though it is 7:00, but we'll take maybe a three-minute break so that people can stretch their legs a little bit, and then we'll get started in about three minutes.